I now call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for March 28th, 2022. First, I want to welcome Dr. Carroll, our Chief Operating Officer, to his new role this evening as he is filling in for Dr. Shandor, who is out of town. As this is the last week before our spring break, I know everyone's busy meeting demands of deadlines and finishing up assignments. Our staff, students, and families are all looking forward to a relaxing spring break. With that in mind, let's all stay focused on completing our tasks and then we can enjoy our time. I will now share the mission statement. The mission statement of YCSD, the mission statement of the York County School Division is to engage all students in acquiring the skills and knowledge needed to make productive contributions in the world. Next, I will share some information about our pledge leader, Wesley Alstrom, a fifth grade student at Grafton Bethel Elementary. Wesley is a fifth grade student in Ms. Lewis's class at Grafton Bethel Elementary School. He's an exemplary student both in and out of school. His teachers share that Wesley is always willing to help and is a positive role model for his classmates. Whenever Wesley is faced with a challenge, he always rises to the occasion and perseveres. He has made the All-A honor roll both quarters this year. Outside of school, he is a great teammate on the soccer field. Wesley has two younger brothers who also attend Grafton Bethel, Benjamin in Ms. Bacon's kindergarten class and Nicholas in Mrs. Hayes' second grade class. Wesley is a true example of a great Grizzly student. Please stand as Wesley leads us in our pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Wesley. Great job. Now we'll move into our awards and recognitions, and we have our Seniors of the Month. The following students are being recognized for their achievements. From Bruton High School, Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, I'm afraid that Chloe Anderson, the Senior of the Month, is not here because she's at a swim meet and seeing how Bruton just won the Class 2A Swim Championship of the state, I think that's as good a place for her to be as anywhere. So she hopes to be with us next month.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, I have Grafton High School's Senior of the Month, and it is Lauren Falk. If you could just stand at your place right there with your father, who's here, Dr. Andrew Falk, and Ms. Kristen Falk, if y'all would stand, yeah. There you go. So we're pleased to present Lauren Falk from Grafton High School as the March Senior of the Month. Lauren currently serves in a leadership role as Vice President of the Class of 2022, where she has spent countless hours planning events for her classmates in order to make their senior year as special as possible, such as the winning homecoming hallway, the senior prom, and many fundraising events. Last year, Lauren served on the Executive Board of the Student Council Association, where she helped plan events that were designed to foster a sense of community among the Grafton students within the restrictions imposed by COVID-19. In addition to a leadership role, Lauren is the captain of the Grafton High School Field Hockey Team, and she was honored to be named to the first team All-Region as a midfielder. Lauren was also a member of the girls' soccer team the past two years, but as a senior, Lauren decided to try something new and is currently the manager of the boys' varsity soccer team. In addition to these activities, Lauren has maintained a high GPA resulting in her inductions into the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Societies. Outside of school, Lauren is an active traveler and an active volunteer in the community and also works a part-time job. Her volunteer activities reflect her strong sense of community and willingness to help those around her. For example, when the 2020 PTSA Vakler ceremony had to quickly become completely virtual, Lauren was asked by the PTSA to use her movie editing skills to create and edit the entire ceremony. She worked dozens of hours to get it done before graduation. This is indicative of Lauren's exemplary character and her diligence and hard work is much appreciated in the Grafton High School community. Lauren is a fantastic student, and we wish her the best as she continues her education at Virginia Tech next year. Congratulations, Lauren.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Myatt?
Yeah, absolutely. Hilberger, why don't you all stand if you would, please?
The whole row.
Yes, the whole row, which is great. Grandma, Aunt Gretchen. So I'm delighted to introduce Kayden Hilberger, who has the TAB High School Senior of the Month for March. I'd also like to congratulate Kayden's parents, Mark and Esther, as well as his sister, who's a freshman at TAB, Mika. Grandmother Judy joined us, and Aunt Gretchen also joined us. So it's nice to see a representation from across the family. Welcome, everybody, and thank you very, very much. Academically, Kayden's an outstanding student who will complete eight Advanced Placement courses on his way to fulfilling the requirements for the YCSD Honors Program while maintaining a GPA well above 4.0. He is also active in numerous school clubs and activities to include Key Club, National Honor Society, and DECA. And Kayden has also, or has also, served as a 4-H Camp Counselor. So that's quite a resume. Thank you. In addition to his school and community service, Kayden is an accomplished athlete who competes in two varsity sports. Kayden has played basketball every year and is a four-year letter winner in baseball, where he serves as a team captain. He is a strong leader who leads by example, but more importantly, makes everybody better around him. In all these endeavors, it's Kayden's attitude that shines through. He holds himself to the highest standards and always provides his best effort. He is mature and kind to others. He is thoughtful and extremely analytical. He takes care in all his actions and ensures he is doing the best possible thing at the very best possible time. His laid-back demeanor masks Kayden's keenly intense desire to always achieve at the highest level. According to Kayden's teachers, he is a wonderful student and an even better person, which is quite a compliment. TAB High School benefits from Kayden's dedication to excellence each and every day, and he's an outstanding representative of the school and very deserving to be recognized as Senior of the Month. So congratulations. Thank you for your personal example, your service to the community, and your leadership, Kayden. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you.
And I had the pleasure of reading for York High School, but that student, Kaylee South, is also at a swim meet, so she's going to be joining us also in April, so we'll be honoring her at that time. We're going to move into Student Service Awards. As Dr. Carroll heads down front, I think we're going to start with Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes, I have the Student Service Award from Grafton Bethel Elementary School. If Lila Doer and the Assistant Principal Anne Shoemaker can please come forward. Lila is a fifth grade student in Mrs. Lyerman's class at Grafton Bethel Elementary School. Every day, she demonstrates the qualities of a great Grizzly student, being respectful, responsible, safe, and kind. During the school day, Lila goes out of her way to help other students and her teachers in the classroom. In fact, she has been known to volunteer her time to work through extra practice with her peers in both reading and math. Lila's teachers share that she is attentive, hardworking, and thinks outside the box. Lila also participates in Girl Scouts and follows the Girl Scout law throughout her daily life. She was an A/B honor roll student for the first quarter this year and an All-A honor roll in the second marking period. She is a true role model to her peers and very deserving of this recognition. Please join us in congratulating Lila Doer as Grafton Bethel's Student Service Award recipient.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Mr. Schaefer?
Well...
Somebody's swimming.
From VHS, it's Angelina R. Belly Smith, and she is unable to be here tonight as well, so we will take care of her next month.
Next month, we'll be very busy. All right, we're going to move into our Community Volunteers of the Month. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So the Volunteer of the Month from Grafton Bethel Elementary School is Ms. Karen Smith. If she would come forward with the Assistant Principal Anne Shoemaker. So Karen Smith is a wonderful example of a dedicated school volunteer. She is the mother of Kaylee, a third grade student at Grafton Bethel, and Mrs. Smith is actively involved in the Grafton Bethel Elementary School PTA. She serves as the Fun Run Chair, as well as being a Helping Hands volunteer and volunteer coordinator for the group. Mrs. Smith also volunteers frequently in the library and coordinates the other volunteers. Mrs. Smith is currently leading the Girls on the Run, a running club at Grafton Bethel Elementary School, and an after-school program as well. Ms. Smith has greatly appreciated at Grafton Bethel Elementary for her commitment to the students, staff, and community. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Myatt?
Yeah, is Jennifer Hyman here? Oh, please, come on up. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to introduce myself. Arletha, is that, please, come on up, from Bruton High School. So Jennifer Hyman is joined by the principal at Bruton High School, Arletha Dockery. Bruton High School is very fortunate to have Jennifer serve as a parent volunteer and PTSA Hospitality Committee Chair. Mrs. Hyman believes in having an impact on our schools as well as other schools in the Bruton Zone, so she's very active. Jennifer is always looking for opportunities to support students, teachers, and staff at Bruton. This year, she wrote and was awarded two grants on behalf of the PTSA, and a Healthy Minds Grant, which focuses on mindfulness and the Youth of Virginia Speak Out After Prom Party Grant, which will allow Bruton's PTSA to continue to host a free event after prom, A-Net keeping students safe while they celebrate together. These funds will help support our students and staff and will have a tremendous positive impact on our school community. Each month, Jennifer coordinates a mindfulness moment, which allows students to take a break to focus on improving their mental health. Our students and teachers have really enjoyed these activities, and we greatly appreciate Mrs. Hyman's continuous support to Bruton High School. Thank you very much.
All right, next we'll have our York Foundation for Public Education presentation. Mr. Schaefer, can you please share some comments?
Sure. I'd like to invite Ms. Christina, yeah, York Foundation for Public Education Board Member, to step forward and assist Dr. Carroll to present gifts to each of our award recipients. Please come up front when you hear your name called. Congratulations to Wesley Alstrom, a fifth grader from Grafton Bethel Elementary School for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Awards recipients, Leela Doer from Grafton Bethel Elementary School and Angelina R. Belly Smith from Bruton High, who was unable to attend, but hopefully will be here next month. We also congratulate our Seniors of the Month, Chloe Anderson, who's at a swim meet, Lauren Falk from Grafton High School, Kayden Hilberger from TAB High School, and Kaylee South, who is also at a swim meet. Special gifts tonight are from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education, a partnership with their donor, Jean Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being dominated by a foundation supporter. Congratulations, all you recipients.
Did everybody get pictures if they wanted them?
Yes, get pictures.
Congratulations. Thank you. Next, we have our Joint Base Langley-Eustis School Liaison Recognition. Dr. Carroll, do you have comments about this recognition?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Later on in the agenda, we will vote on a proclamation recognizing April as the month of the military child, but at this time, I will ask Dr. Aaron Butler, Director of School Administration, to come to the podium for a very special military recognition. Dr. Butler?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Carroll, it is an honor and a privilege to come before you this evening for a special recognition. I would like to ask Mrs. Tammy Edwards, the Joint Base Langley-Eustis School Liaison Program Manager, to come forward and to join Dr. Carroll at the front. As you know, Virginia schools educate more military children than any state in the nation. The York County School Division educates more military children than any other school division in the state, serving the highest concentration of military students in Virginia. To successfully support our students, we work alongside school ladies and officers from the Air Force, Army, and Navy. For the past three years, it has been our pleasure to cooperate and collaborate with Mrs. Edwards. In her role as liaison with York County School Division, Ms. Edwards has partnered closely with us to ensure Air Force families have all they need for a positive school experience. Her efforts have made a real difference. During her tenure, she has been right there with us in the trenches as we have maneuvered some very uncharted territory. She provided ongoing support as we worked to find locations to teach students after the Grafton complex fire. Ms. Edwards' commitment to us remained steadfast as we faced the many adversities caused by COVID-19. She even rallied support from our friends at the Pentagon to see if they could help us work out details for graduation several years ago when we were trying to do an in-person graduation event in the midst of COVID-19. She has facilitated numerous interactions with School Division and military leadership to ensure we are successfully planning for the future. Ms. Edwards will be retiring at the end of this week, effective April the 1st. While we will miss her and all the collaborations that she has brought, we wish her only the very best in all of her future endeavors. The plaque presented to her this evening states our appreciation for all she has done to support York County School Division and our Air Force families. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in expressing our greatest appreciation to Mrs. Tammy Edwards.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make a comment. Ms. Edwards has been here with us for three years. I remember when she came on board, because I was still a fairly new board member on the school board, but we're pleased to have such a great military liaison as Ms. Edwards to our division with such a large military presence we have in our community. It's so beneficial to help build partnerships, educational partnerships, and that sort of thing, and it's going to be hard shoes to fill, but thank you. Thank you.
I'm a former, I'm an Army brat, former military child, and Tammy will know this. It's been quite the challenge over the last 15 to 20 years for all our families in transition and the pandemic and plenty of dynamics, and we have military families here. I know and am sure we have retirees here, but the first stop for every military child is school. We immediately, when we arrived at a duty station, we immediately went to the school. And so Tammy, that's how important it is to all families, but particularly military families, and that was our introduction of the community, and that was the center of our community was at the school. So thank you very, very much. It's that important. Appreciate it.
And I just want to say thank you for everything you've done, but enjoy retirement. Do what you want to do.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for everything you've done, and so much of what you do affects more than just the military-connected child, and you jump in and you help out with all sorts of different things, like when we were saying before with some of the COVID-19 and with the Grafton fire, it really was more than just the military-connected child. You're just always willing to be a helping hand and a wonderful example to all the students, so thank you very much, Ms. Edwards.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next we move on to Accent on Academics. Dr. Carroll, will you share some information about tonight's Accent on Academics?
Yes, thank you. For this evening's Accent on Academics, Coventry Elementary School will present March Book Madness. As an extension of Read Across America Week, Coventry developed March Book Madness to promote literacy across the curriculum and provide students with opportunities to connect reading and writing to math and technology. March Book Madness is an engaging bracket-style book tournament, which matches 16 books in one-to-one games. Students across the building vote to advance books through each round, with one book named as the champion. Coventry Elementary Principal, Mr. Brian Fries, will now share additional details and introduce the presenters.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Carroll. I'm honored and excited to be here this evening to share Coventry's March Book Madness with you. The NCAA's March Madness Basketball Tournament is in full swing, and we are replicating that same energy at Coventry Elementary with books. It's a continuation of Read Across America Month. March Book Madness began with our referee here, Ms. Alexia Perkins, and her class, and is now spread school-wide. At the end of our presentation tonight, you'll have the opportunity to predict our winning book based on how effectively our students persuade you. All I can say is I hope your bracket tonight looks a lot better than my basketball bracket does. At this time, we'll turn it over to Ms. Perkins.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Carroll. My name is Alexia Perkins, and I am a second-grade teacher at Coventry Elementary, and dare I say, and I hope I don't get in trouble, maybe the best school, elementary school in the district. I don't know.
Agreed, agreed.
Yes, thank you. So I am here to share, like Mr. Fries said, about March Book Madness, so we'll go ahead and get started. All right, so March Book Madness is an engaging program that promotes reading. It is a reading competition beginning with 16 picture books, and each week, students vote on their favorite books in the brackets that are set up in a tournament-style format in which basketball teams compete. Ultimately, one book is named Book Champion. This is our March Book Madness Bracket, and so it starts with 16 picture books, called the Sweet Sixteen, which turn into the Elite Eight. The Elite Eight turn into the Final Four, and then finally, two books go head-to-head for the book competition. The original 16 books, which are on the edge, are paired by similarities such as authors, genre, character, character traits, and theme, and this allows students to see representation in text as well as make student connections in text as well. So now on to our voting. So students cast their vote using Microsoft Forms via Canvas, and this is an example of what our Canvas page looks like. So we have both of the books kind of like in tournament style, and they click the Vote Here button at the bottom, which links them to a Microsoft Forms link. And at the bottom, you'll see we collect our data like that, and this round, it looks like the magical yet one over the invisible boy, but this draws in the math piece to it as well, so we discuss data and graphing, which is the second-grade SOLs. The next is what we have here today, what our students will be presenting. This is our writing companion that goes along with March Book Madness, so incorporates prediction, opinion, and persuasive writing, which are also second-grade SOLs. Here's my favorite. This is our Coventry Elementary March Book Madness hallway display. This has become a major talking point at our school. As a result, March Book Madness has become school-wide, and multiple grade levels have joined in, which has ignited a love for reading and an anticipation of reading across the building. All right, this is my favorite part. So these are my former Perky pupils. I call my students the Perky pupils. It's a playoff of my last name, which is Perkins. And so these are five March Madness alumni, and they're going to give their perspective on March Book Madness. So this first young man I have here, he may be familiar to some of you, I'm not too sure. His name is Joel, and we're going to get his perspective first. Here we go.
I like March Book Madness because I like books, and my favorite books, I Found a Kitty.
Next, we have Tucker.
Hello, I think March Book Madness was so fun. My favorite book was I Found a Kitty.
All right, next we have Andre.
The reason I like March Book Madness is because we get to read entertaining books, and a book I like is The Girl Who Never Made Mistakes.
I like March Book Madness because we get to read a lot of awesome books.
I like March Book Madness because we get to read a bunch of fun books, and my favorite book was Picture Book by Dawn.
A chance to vote. These are four books that our current Perky pupils are going to be talking about today that are in the running to become the Final Four. So we have Nalky Smith, we have Aria Mu, Leah Coyle, and we have Liam Ogeron, and they're going to try to persuade you about their favorite book, and then ultimately, you guys will get to vote, just as we do in the classroom. So now we'll have Nalky Smith.
Hi, my name is Nalky Smith. I think the girl with big, big questions will go to the Final Four because it teaches a lesson that asking questions is how we grow. She loves asking questions, but her friends are annoyed. For example, she asks one more question and all of her friends snapped. Finally, she did the right thing by telling her class to help their birds by planting more trees. So that's why I think the girl with big, big questions will move on to the Final Four of March Book Madness.
All right, and next we have Aria Mu.
Hi, my name is Aria Mu. I think that I Want My Hat Back When March Book Madness Because It Is So Funny. It is funny because the bear saw his hat but did not notice it was his hat. The book also has good illustrations. For example, the illustrations are like a cartoon. I Want My Hat Back is very entertaining. For example, it uses a lot of animals. That is why I think I Want My Hat Back When March Book Madness.
Awesome job. All right, now we hear from Leah Coyle.
Hi, my name is Leah Coyle. I think the book Nerdy Corn is going to move on to the Final Four of March Book Madness. I think this book will move on because it teaches you to be kind to everyone. In the book, the other unicorns are mean to friends, but friends are so kind to them. Another reason I think this book will move on because it teaches right.
It's okay, you're good, you're doing great.
Another reason I think this book will move on because it's about a unicorn, and who doesn't like unicorns? That is why I think the book Nerdy Corn is going to move on to the Final Four of March Book Madness.
All right, and last but certainly not least is Liam Ogeron.
Good evening, my name is Liam Ogeron. I think I Found a Kitty will go on to the Final Four of March Book Madness. I like this book because it's so cute. I think it's cute because the kitty and babies were adorable. It can also teach you something. Sometimes it takes a few tries before you get it right. That's why I think I Found a Kitty will go on to the Final Four of March Book Madness.
Beautiful job, Liam. Awesome.
And so Board Members, you should have a Microsoft Forms link, but we also have QR codes for you to go ahead and vote for one of these as our book champion.
Ms. Perkins, I did not vote twice. That was Mr. Myatt who had to do it on my...
Not a cheater. Oh, my goodness. Every vote counts, right?
On the business phone.
The results are in. It looks like the board thinks I Found a Kitty will move on to the Final Four of March Book Madness. Stay tuned for an update from Mr. Fries to see if your choice makes it to the Final Four.
Thank you, guys, so much. Thank you so much. That concludes our presentation. I'll hand it back over to Mr. Fries to close us out.
Thank you again, and we are happy to take any questions, or our students are happy to take any questions that you have at this time.
Well, first of all, I think you guys are challenging people to start coming in costume to their Accent on Academics. I love it. Board Members?
Just a quick question for everyone. Did you get a chance to read all the books that you have today with us? Did you read all of them?
Yes.
Yes, that's how you can determine which one you like, right? Yes, absolutely.
Was there a Bracket Buster where someone didn't expect the book to move on to beat one of the others, that sort of the St. Peters or the...
Was there a book that you guys didn't expect to win that won? Anybody want to answer that? You?
I will say that I Found a Kitty is a repeat from last year. It was last year's champion and is back again. The book that Dr. Shandor read on Flipgrid for Read Across America Month for everyone actually did not make it out of the first round.
I did see I Found a Kitty in some of your former pupils.
We'll give Dr. Shandor a new book.
I was partial to a girl with big, big questions because I also have people get annoyed by me asking so many questions. That was my vote. You guys did such a great job. Thank you so much. And Ms. Perkins, your energy is contagious. job. Thank you so much. And Ms. Perkins, your energy is contagious.
Ms. Perkins, you're a unicorn tonight.
Yes, I am in uniform. I just found out today, my students realized I was a referee because we are doing March Book Madness. That just happened about five minutes ago, even though I wore this in school, and so they made a connection tonight, which is great. So, yes, thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. The Board will take a short recess to meet tonight's award recipients and give them an opportunity to take some photos. Business portion of the meeting, and first, we have unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to our presentations. And the first is our pay plan update. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you. Dr. Tony Vladu, Chief Human Resources Officer, will provide a brief pay plan update.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Carroll, thank you for the opportunity to provide two proposed updates during tonight's pay plan updates presentation. First is we're proposing to combine two positions. This is the ACC and the ACI, the Assessment Compliance and Intervention, as well as the Assessment Compliance Coordinator position. These positions are very similar, so based on recommendations from the Department of Assessment and Accountability, we're combining these positions. So what will be a, the ACI position will be subsumed into the ACC position. Second, we would like to delete the ACI position from the pay plan, as this position was subsumed within the ACC position. Last on this slide, we would like to add a new position titled Register of Behavior Technician at Pay Grade 20. This position is responsible for providing direct support in the school setting under the supervision of classroom teachers, special educators, building administrators, and the board-certified behavior analyst. These concludes the pay plan updates. At this time, I can take any questions and comments that you might have.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Vladu.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna move into our committee updates by Board members, and we'll be sharing information relating to our committee updates, and so I'll begin with Mr. Richardson.
Thank you. So I did attend the WHRO HARETTA meeting on the sixteenth of this month. HARETTA basically stands for the Hampton Roads Educational Advisory Committee Meeting through WHRO, the public television. And there was just a couple of things they updated this on. They continue to provide professional development to teachers in different schools as they ask for it. They have some bands that go around and do different programs. Their bands actually went to several schools and distributed over three hundred and fifty books to children. They conducted and held the Regional Spelling Bee this past quarter. And as far as digital learning, they're working with the VDOE to, and their production department, to create and develop new videos for Virginia stories related to African-American history, which is something they had committed the VDOE that would help with, and they've completed three of those videos. And they had their first meeting of the Student Advisory Board that was held on February twenty-first. There were twenty-seven students from six different divisions, school divisions across the region, which is the peninsula and the south side that attended. That's it, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Reganbotham?
Yes, on the fifteenth of this month, I attended the GAC meeting for the Gifted Education, and the bulk portion of this meeting was the Gifted Education update and the Local Plan update. And we'll learn more about it later this month in the two-on-two meeting about the next coming years with the new update for Gifted Education and YCSD. But some of the things that went into that, some of the information we'll see, there was a steering committee within GAC that went over the current plan and made recommendations for a draft for the new one, and then that draft went to principals and to the GAC as a whole to look at and make some recommendations. And there will be a public notice of this information on the website after spring break. It will go up there. We'll have a presentation on it, and eventually, it'll be up to us for a vote. They talked a little bit more about supporting of Gifted Education students past seventh and eighth grade towards high school, some extra things that we can do, sometimes maybe some workshops, presentations, and things like that to continue that, because they build such relationships from kindergarten through like seventh and eighth grade, you know, to continue sort of that as they go. And then one other thing I wanted to highlight is that we did, we started testing all first graders here in York County for gifted identification, and then the testing changed through, it was all through the computer now for testing. And we're not quite sure if it's like a little cluster right now, or if it was because the testing changed and how we were identifying students, but just last month, there were sixty students in first grade alone that were identified, and that's about twice as many as normal, as what we would normally see, about thirty. So it'll be interesting to see data as we move forward, if it's sort of just a cluster in that first grade level, or if it's changing in how students are identified now with it. So, but those are the basic updates that we have so far.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes. On the seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, went to the York Foundation for Public Education meeting. We actually met in person. I think everybody was there, and it's really interesting to see people that have worked together for a long time just click, and it's almost like they know what each other's gonna say. But they discussed a lot of the fundraising aspects that's coming up, because what York Foundation does is they provide grants and they provide scholarships, and they are behind the scenes providing things for our teachers and our schools and our students. And as a matter of fact, they're gonna have the, on the twentieth of April, I think that most of us are gonna be there for the presentation of the scholarship winners and the grant winners and stuff of the Yorktown freak shit. So it was a very interesting meeting. I'm still kind of lost, but I'm getting caught up. But it's really neat work that they do. It really is.
Thank you. Mr. Myatt?
Yeah, absolutely. The Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee actually meets the day after tomorrow, on Wednesday evening. One thing that we have done here recently, as you know, is we did, as a board, certify applications from students and parents and other citizens that were interested in serving on the board. So that major step has been taken. We will meet for the first time in a while on Wednesday with Jennifer Romanelli and her career coaches and team, so I'm looking forward to that. In the meantime, I also have a role as a vice chair at New Horizons Regional Education Center, and as you know, they have a, obviously have a career and technical education program there at New Horizons. And real quick, the culinary students hosted regional superintendents and members of the Board of Trustees for a dinner for which to expose them to what they refer to, those of us that were once servers or dishwashers, short-order cook, front-house and back-house operations. So I get a chance to visit with culinary arts students, but I'm gonna read an excerpt from the recent CTE newsletter, I should say, New Horizons newsletter, real quick. So the Flying Sauciers, under the leadership of Chef Carol Robbs, who's responsible for the curriculum and teaching there of the culinary program, earned a top spot. They're number six out of ten nationally, and they're a finalist for the 2022 NASA Hunt Culinary Challenge. And what it is, is to develop a meal that will accompany the astronauts to the International Space Station. So it's a huge deal. So they're one of ten schools, so it's pretty remarkable. But just as importantly, oh, by the way, I should tell you what the, so it was a shrimp fajita, Mexican street corn casserole, kick, and brownie cookies. So in space, if you don't know, you need a little extra spice, because the astronauts lose a little bit of taste, and their senses are slightly dulled, I guess, in zero gravity. And anyways, so apparently, it's very, very spicy, so we're very proud of them. But more importantly, let me identify some of the folks on that team that are from the division. So from Bruton High School, Hannah Morton, Kylie Adams from York High School, India Anderson McCoy from TAB, Diana Jones from TAB, and Brandon Fitzgibbon from Grafton. So I got to visit with them. The meal, by the way, was absolutely delicious, but we're very pleased for the Flying Sauciers, and I'll have a little additional update on our advisory committee meeting on Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt. I know this past month, I had my CX Special Education Advisory Council meeting, and they are gearing up to write their report that will get presented to us as the school board. And I know they're also recruiting for new parents in upcoming year. So if you're a parent who has a student with a disability, I would encourage you to visit the website and download the application. The ideal situation would be to have representation from every single school. I think we can do it. So I would encourage you to look that up. Also had our York County Youth Commission Awards Committee meet, and we were able to look over all of those applications for the Outstanding Youth Awards. So that's always one of those times where you just have great hope for our future, when you're reading all these kids do and everything they do in the community. So I'm honored to be a part of that. And it's not an official committee, but I know that I committed to attend these each year. The York County PTA had their March meeting, and they're also looking for leaders for next year. So again, I encourage parents to get involved with the PTA at their school and take a leadership role if you're comfortable with it, but it's just a great way to be involved. So thank you for those updates. And we will move on to our comments by citizens. Our public participation at board meetings, and before I open up for public comments, I will share some remarks. The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, nor to the superintendent, the staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. Each speaker may speak up to three minutes. A timer is visible to speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will begin after you state your name and address. I now open up the public participation for comments of citizens, and tonight, we have one speaker signed up, Albert Tumanello.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Carroll. My name is Buck Tumanello. I live at 138 Breezy Point Drive, which is in District Four here in the county. I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight, and it's for one reason and one reason only, and that's to invite you to a showing of the documentary, Whose Children Are They? You may have already seen it. It played a couple of weeks ago here in town. It is a most heart-wrenching, important movie documentary that has been showed, I think, in the last four or five years in this country. It's very persuasive. It features empowered parents, teachers, brave teachers, and frontline education experts on what is going on within the school systems across this country. And I am inviting you to a showing of this documentary at our church, the World Outreach Worship Center, which is located at 1233 Shields Road in Newport News. Actually, it's just right down the road on Denby Boulevard. The movie will start at 5:00 PM. Tickets are required. And you can call me. I have flyers to pass out with my name and phone number on it. You can call me. You can call the church, or you can go online to register for the movie. And quite frankly, I would love to be able to meet each and every one of you there, and other interested parents here in the room. So with that, I say thank you, and I have flyers that I would hand to the secretary.
Can we just ask the date?
That was our only speaker who signed up. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak tonight? Alright, I will close the public participation for comments of citizens, and now we'll move into matters by board members. Mr. Myatt, you want to give us a start?
Oh my goodness, absolutely. Yeah, hey, real quick, this happens, we have Division Level Teachers of the Year, and I had an opportunity to pay a visit to several teachers that, it so happens, are all out of District Five. So I thought that I would mention them by name. Again, on behalf of my fellow board members, we're obviously thankful for their continued devotion to our students and commitment. And Julie Miller, out of Mount Vernon Elementary School at the elementary level, Missy Inquist at TAB Middle, and then Jamie Carpenter at TAB High. So I wanted to congratulate them formally, if you will, via the meeting. And like I said, we're extremely thankful for their sacrifice and continued devotion to our students. I am not gonna steal any thunder from Mr. Schaefer, because my time, on Bruton ribbon cutting, but I so enjoyed being at Bruton. But more importantly, the Learning Commons and what that does from an infrastructure standpoint with regard to collaboration. When I say more importantly, we had an opportunity to really visit with teachers who are doing amazing things, not only with technology, but together, cross-curricular. We saw a little bit of that today with Ms. Perkins. I really enjoyed that interface, particularly with the librarian, and obviously, the leadership team at Bruton. So I was very pleased to be able to do that, and that's all I got for this evening. So thank you. Did I mention the teachers of the...
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, thank you. Yes, we did get to go to the ribbon cutting of the Learning Commons on March seventh, and the neat thing is, I remember what it was like before, okay? And it is so different now, and it is so, that the kids can be collaborative, and it's really fun for them. I mean, it's a great, great place to be. And not only that, but I think I took everyone except for Laurel down to see the bathrooms in SOA. And let me tell you, they were all impressed, okay? Because I took them to the, to the old bathrooms over by the gym, which are still in decent shape, okay? And I said, this is what they used to look like, except much worse. And then took them down to the new bathrooms in SOA, and everybody was impressed. So that was definitely a good trip. We had a, we had a fun time there, talking to the teachers and the students that were there, and of course, the administration, our Letha and her team do a great job. I also got to go, I visited all my stores, um, my stores, all my schools that day, and had a really good time, really good time. Went to the SOA Dance Jubilee on the fourth, which, if you haven't been to the Dance Jubilee, it was, it was both on the screen and in person, but they did some, some wonderful, it was a wonderful evening of entertainment. It really was. The kids are very talented. SOA is such an awesome program, and it's, it's just going gangbusters up at Bruton. And let's see, and then I went to YFP Board Meeting. I think that's about it. It was a busy month. Really was.
Definitely. Mr. Reganbotham?
Yes, the Bruton's Learning Commons, Learning Commons presentation and seeing everything in person. It was, it was really nice. One, the, two things that struck me with it was the, the engineering students, when they were showing the demonstration of the bridges that they built and how they came up with the design, and then using the 3D printer for part of how they designed the bridge, and showing how they had to figure out how much weight it could withstand and everything. It was really neat to see that aspect of it. And then also, there was a teacher, I can't remember her name now, but she was talking about film editing, you know, and all of her students had to write and act and produce and edit these short films based on short stories that they read. And it was really neat to see those. And she was talking about the programs, and the programs they use are the same programs that people use out, out in the real world. She was talking about how former students have gone on, and they, they have the experience with it, and they can immediately step into some of these editing jobs for, for things. And it's all about making connections, you know, in the business, and so we have some real-life, you know, connections going, and people going straight into those careers, really, and just stepping up. It was really neat to see. And yes, the bathrooms, Mr. Schaefer, were nice. The, it looked like Minecraft to me, the way they set up the tiles and everything. We might have to get a dedication. It might have to become the Mr. Schaefer bathroom at the SOA. But I also want to give a shout out to all of the chorus and band programs in middle school and high school this month. They were doing their assessments, and they had pre-assessment concerts and the actual assessments. I had a chance to see a handful and hear some. TAB Middle School and TAB High School, I saw their pre-assessment concert, and I saw Bruton High School's assessment performance, heard clips from, from other ones, and the choruses and the bands. Everyone who went, they got superior and excellent ratings, which are the two highest ratings possible when they went. It's kind of like the SOL test for those music classes, for secondary music. And so I just want to give a shout out to those students and those teachers for their hard work and their success. I'm looking forward to the upcoming future chefs, you know, later this week. I think there's some other board members going to that. It's gonna be neat to see those, those students presenting the meals that they made, and we get to get a free dinner that night as we try all those different things. And I also want to give a shout out for the April twenty-third Coventry Cougar Dash. It's a 5K at Coventry Elementary School. You saw some of the great students today from Coventry, and I would recommend and encourage everyone to participate. And if 5K is too much, they have a one-mile fun run or walk that you can do. And if 5K is too much, they have a one-mile fun run or walk that you can do. So I encourage all the other board members, I'll be there. We can race Mr. Freeze, who I believe is running too for it, or we can cheer him on as he goes past us that way, too. But that's coming up on April 23rd, and you can register for that online. And other than that, I just want to wish all the students and parents and families, you know, get through this week and have a wonderful spring break. The following week, a chance to rest and relax as we gear up for the last quarter.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
I'd just like to mention the Teacher of the Year, Division Teacher of the Year. I was able to attend, it's always a fun event to attend, especially to surprise that teacher. And I won't go into a lot of details, because it's already been covered, but the Bruton High School Learning Commons, awesome. It was just as good, if not better, than the York High one. I think they're all great. I mean, they have the updated technology and the spaces there for the kids to learn But I'll also be at the Future Chefs Thursday, so I'll be there Thursday night. And if you haven't done that yet, don't eat before you go there, and just have a little bit of each one, because if you have too much of one, you'll be too full halfway through it. But that's always a great competition for the children to do for the SEDEXO. But that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I know this past month, I got to read at both York Elementary and Seaford Elementary for Read Across America. That was great to be back in classrooms and interacting with kids and reading some hysterical stories, and then hearing their great questions to those stories. That's always a great time. And again, the Bruton Learning Commons, it was a great time. And one of the things I appreciate is I know a lot of work goes into that, when they do an event like that, having the teachers stay late, the students stay late, and put those presentations together. So I so appreciate that. It just gives us a completely different perspective. Able to witness the student-led conferences at Seaford Elementary. I was joking with Ms. Nagel that that was the thing that we had scheduled next before the world kind of shut down. And what she does there is she has the students run their conferences. So they come up with this entire presentation, and they present it to their parents. And they're the ones that come up with their goals in concert with their teacher, but the teacher isn't the one sitting there with the parents, it's the student presenting everything. It's just a great way to empower the kids and just to watch them. I mean, they're just puffed up and just ready to show everything off. It was really, really great. And then the kids actually gave their parents a quiz, and had to grade it. So I think that was the highlight of their night, for sure. So I just love that, that different twist on a conference. And then again, the prize patrol for the teachers. That's just a great way to get in the school and celebrate what everybody's doing. So again, I'll echo the sentiment, just want everybody to have a great spring break, a safe spring break, and then we'll just finish this year strong. So we get to move into the exciting portion now, the financial matters. Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, everyone's been waiting for this all evening. It's my pleasure to share some information regarding our financial matters. We have some claims certified for payment for February 2022. The significant expenditures for February, the first one is payments related to instruction totaling approximately $176,000. These include payments to New Horizons, AbelNet Inc., and Faison Center, and that's for special education-related expenses. There's more details in board docs for anyone who wants to see the specific numbers. We also have some payments related to IT totaling $519,150, including payments to CDWG, Virginia Business Systems, Microsoft, and Cox Communications, and that's for things like the Division Firewall, content filtering, lease agreements, annual support agreements, and the Ethernet and Internet service. We have some payments for operations and maintenance that total $128,900 to Virginia Power, CHKD, Jeffords Corp., and York County for utility services, a couple electric pallet lift, an electric pallet lift we need, and some other utility services, athletic trainer services. Our payments for food services are $454,900, including payments to SEDEXO, Alto Hartley, and Tyson Foods for food service and replacement kitchen equipment at a couple different locations for that. We also have a consideration of approval of financial reports from February 2022. The significant changes for our operating budget for revenues, we have a local source revenue from fiscal year 2022 that's down $426,000 when compared to 2021, and YCSD will receive a one-time lease payment in fiscal year 20, YCSD received already, I'm sorry, a one-time lease payment in fiscal year 21 for $450,000. The sales tax revenue for 2022 is up by almost $1.5 million as a result of the expected economic growth. And the federal revenue from February 2022 is up $515,000 as a result of the $2 million Impact Aid payment received in February of 2022. For expenditures, we have expenditures for instruction that have increased by about $5.3 million in February '22 when compared to '21. This is a result of scheduled pay increase for fiscal year '22 and the result of moving the 10-month employee pay schedule up one month earlier in fiscal year '22. Transportation, technology, operations, admin, and health expenditures have increased about $1.7 million primarily as a result of the scheduled pay increase for fiscal year '22. The significant changes relating to our food service budget for revenues and expenditures, we have the federal food service revenue for February '22 increased by more than $1.3 million. The growth in this revenue is due to an increase in student participation and the USDA's decision to still continue to cover costs of all student meals for fiscal year 2022. And the food service expenditures for February 2022 have increased about $1 million when compared to February '21 due to increased student participation and the replacement of some kitchen equipment. We also have a consideration of approval of Resolution 2215, which is a resolution authorizing specific procurement. Resolution 2215 requires the board's approval, as you know. It authorizes the procurements of more than $50,000, and we have eight items on the resolution totaling $1,996,000. Again, these are broken down on board docs, but it covers things like multiple textbooks, like AP Calculus, Calculus Chemistry, AP Literature, French, Spanish, German, and a couple other subjects. Tab Elementary Playground Repair, which I believe we all understand is necessary there. Some decodable texts, a payment to Virginia, Virtual Virginia, Bruton High School Gym Repairs, Reading Instruction Materials, Sands Anderson, which is legal services, and then we have Sign Language Interpreter Services as well. And with that, that concludes our financial matters. So Madam Chair, I move to approve the financial matters as listed.
And I would second that.
All right, any further questions? Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the financial matters as listed. Board members, you can cast your vote. The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you, board members.
Thank you. We will move on to our consent calendar. First on the consent calendar, we have approval of personnel actions. We have approval of minutes for special meetings on February 14, 2022, at 5:30 and 7:00. A work session on February 14, 2022, and a regular meeting on February 28, 2022. We have approval of donations in the amount of $1,800. We have approval of instructional materials, adoption for instructional material for 9 through 12 AP Calculus, AP Literature and Composition, AP Language and Composition, AP Human Geography, Anatomy and Physiology, Chemistry, French, and AP German, and AP Spanish. We have approval of updates to the FY '22 Pay Plan, approval of the '22-'23 Calendar. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as listed?
Madam Chair, I move the approval of the consent calendar as listed.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion is made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the consent calendar as listed. Board members, you may cast your vote. Thank you. The motion passed 5 to 0.
Thank you. We will move on to our action items. First, we have a consideration of approval of a proclamation for National Library Week April 4 through 8, 2022. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you. We welcome the opportunity to recognize the tremendous work of our 19 library and media specialists. School media specialists are trained professionals helping students, teachers, and parents by offering services and resources that support lifelong learning, and we appreciate the value, all of the quality work our dedicated library and media specialists do for us each day.
Thank you. Second, we have consideration of approval of a proclamation for National Volunteer Week April 18 through 22, 2022. Dr. Carroll?
We need to go back and vote on that one.
We do? Oh, you're right, sorry. Ms. Ford?
Well, I move to approve the proclamation for National Library Week April 4 through 8, 2022.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Don't get me straight.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the proclamation for National Library Week. You may cast your vote. The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
Now, Dr. Carroll.
This proclamation is in recognition of our many volunteers that assist in our schools. I would like to take this time to thank the many volunteers, parents, and community members who support our teachers and students. Our volunteers have shown flexibility and creativity during changing times, but ultimately, they have remained steadfast in their commitment to use their talents and time to support our students, staff, and teachers.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for National Volunteer Week April 18 through 22.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the proclamation for National Volunteer Week April 18 through 22, 2022.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion is made by Mr. Myatt and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the proclamation for National Volunteer Week. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
Next, we have consideration of approval of a proclamation for Administrative Professionals Week April 25 through 29, 2022. Dr. Carroll?
With this proclamation, the board recognizes our many administrative assistants that assist in our schools and offices. Administrative professionals are vital members of Team YCSD, who support our teachers, parents, and students by maintaining organization and serving as key frontline public relations ambassadors. They play a major role in our division by using their skills to coordinate numerous daily activities and tasks, and we appreciate our amazing team of highly skilled administrative professionals.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve proclamation for Administrative Professionals Week?
I move to approve the proclamation for Administrative Professionals Week April 25 through 29, 2022.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the proclamation for Administrative Professionals Week. You may cast your vote. The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of approval of a proclamation for the Month of the Military Child, April 2022. Dr. Carroll?
I'd like to share some highlights directly from the proclamation. First, the Commonwealth of Virginia is proud to be home to more than 79,000 children whose parents served in the military and are stationed in Virginia. April is also the Month of the Military Child, a special month to recognize and pay tribute to military families and their children for the daily sacrifices made and for their commitment, courage, and unconditional support of our armed forces. And Wednesday, April 20, is designated as National Purple Up Day for all school personnel and students to wear purple in honor of military children, in particular, the students of the York County School Division, which has the highest concentration of military children in Virginia.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for the Month of Military Child, April 2022.
I move that we approve the proclamation for Month of the Military Child, April 2022.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the proclamation for Month of the Military Child, and you may cast your vote. The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
Next, we move on to consideration of approval of Resolution 22-16, a resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2023 operating budget and the fiscal year 2022 expected budget. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We began the budget process back in October with staff analyzing information and identifying cost-reduction efforts, as well as identifying prioritized needs. We also held two virtual budget sessions in order to receive community feedback. A preliminary budget outlook was presented in December, and we updated the board with state and federal funding outlooks in January. In February, the superintendent's proposed operating budget was presented. Our focus priorities in the FY '23 budget are mandates, and then retention and recruitment. In regard to mandates, tuition for the New Horizons Regional Education Center for the Governor's School, the Career and Technical Education and Special Education Programs increased $455,000. The Health and Dental Insurance will increase $990,000, and the state increase to the minimum wage has a $101,000 effect. For retention and recruitment, it is proposed that teachers and paraeducators will receive a 6% raise, and all other staff will receive a 5% raise. The total cost is $6.2 million. The compensation increase comes in the form of a step increase and a cost of living adjustment. The quadrennial review adjustment for Group 3 employees will cost approximately $129,000, and the minimum wage adjustment for the custodial staff will cost approximately $115,000. The board also held a public forum at the end of January and a public hearing at the end of February. At our work session on March 14, Mr. Bowen updated the board regarding the differences between the governor's proposed budget and the House and Senate versions. There have been no changes to Dr. Shandor's proposed budget. We are waiting now for the General Assembly to adopt a final state budget before changes are made. As Mr. Bowen shared on March 14, if the Senate version is adopted, the Division would stand to receive approximately $2 million more in state funding. However, if the House version is adopted, the Division would stand to lose approximately $4.1 million. This evening, the school board will be considering approving their recommended proposed budget for FY '23, which will be transmitted to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration. Final budget actions necessary to present a balanced operating budget will be presented to the school board once the state and county have completed their budget processes. Finally, on behalf of Dr. Shandor, I want to thank all the staff members and community members who have shared their feedback with the superintendent and our board members.
All right, I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-16, a resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2023 operating budget and the fiscal year 2022 expected budget.
Madam Chair, I would move approval of Resolution 22-16, a resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2023 operating budget and fiscal year 2022 expected budget.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve Resolution 22-16. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to policy discussion, and it looks like we have none. We'll move on to our policy first reading. It looks like we also have none. And then we'll move on to policy second reading, and we have a consideration of approval of second reading of Policy LEB, Advanced and Alternative Courses for Credit. Dr. Carroll?
There have been no further changes to this policy.
Wonderful. All right, I need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Policy LEB, Advanced Alternative Courses for Credit.
I move to approve the second reading of Policy LEB, Advanced Alternative Courses for Credit.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the second reading of Policy LEB. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can interrupt just for a moment. I know there's been some question over the past three years now. We've had three different graduation ceremonies, and I know parents are starting to work through the graduation process and figuring out plans for family coming into town. I know we've provided some information out there, but is it possible to receive an update with where we stand with graduation and what our plans are moving forward?
Yes, I'd like to ask Dr. Aaron Butler if he can come up and give you a brief.
Thank you.
Yes, I can give an update, and then if there's any questions, I can also answer those for the board. So following, as you shared, for the last three years, we've done three different modalities for graduation due to the different constraints with COVID-19. And so for this particular year, we started working on graduation back in June on the, after the graduation met at Bailey Field, because we wanted to make sure that we had different venues. So we reached out to four different organizations. We reached out to the College of Woodman Mary, and at that time, they said that they were anticipating some renovations to Kaplan Arena, where we have traditionally had graduation. And they said it would not be available until 2026. And so due to that, we started looking at other venues. We reached out to Christopher Newport University and to Hampton University at the Convocation Center. Both of them, due to COVID restrictions at that time, said they were not entertaining any request for using their facilities. So we did look to the Hampton Coliseum, who said they would be willing to entertain using their facilities. So we did look to the Hampton Coliseum, who said they would be willing to entertain using their facility for our graduation ceremony. So we have been working with them. We formed a committee to start doing some of the Trigo Ed practices. And so we did a potential opportunity analysis to look at, you know, if we were to do it at the Hampton Coliseum, what would be some of the opportunities and advantages. And based on working with the staff, we looked at everything from parking capacity. We looked at similar, having a similar indoor ceremony as we would have had at the College of William &amp; Mary Kaplan Arena. And based on the analysis and the facts, we went with the Hampton Coliseum. And so the date for graduation, it is on June 3rd, which we were, have published. And we have been working with our school principals to make sure that they are familiar with the venue. We're having a few walkthroughs with the staff there. They're going to be working with students to make sure they have practices that simulate what it would be like to be at the Coliseum, so that we're prepared for graduation day.
And I think the parking and just traffic is going to be really nice. It was, Kaplan Arena was, was a great venue, but it was difficult. I mean, there were parents who weren't able to get there in time, trying to figure out parking. So I think just alone, that, that might help. And if we can all fit in Bailey Field and up there, I think we can fit just fine at the Coliseum.
Definitely. I think one of the questions that I had seen kind of circulating on social media was about the tickets for family members. I know that we were limited at Kaplan. With the increased capacity, will families have an opportunity to have more tickets?
Yes, so we asked that families please work with their school administrators. She said, the venue is a little larger than Kaplan Arena, but we still use the same process we normally use. We normally give students a set number of tickets. And then if they do have larger families, they can just speak to their school administrators and senior class sponsors, and they try to work with families in those situations.
And I, I think 2020 had a great graduation, our drive-through graduation. Last year, having it on Bailey Field, I know, I loved it, but I know we had a lot of people who were falling out because of heat. So I know that takes one of your worries on your, off your plate, being able to have it indoors and not worry about that.
Luckily, we didn't have rain, so.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't have to worry about that.
That to contend with as well.
I know people are resistant to change, but, definitely. So, thank you for asking. Thank you, Dr. Butler.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now it is time for the report of the superintendent. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of Dr. Shandor, I would like to just echo some earlier comments from board members. The YCSD Teacher of the Year Program is sponsored by Town Bank through the York Foundation for Public Education. We thank both of those organizations. We too want to extend congratulations to this year's finalists. Mrs. Julie Miller from Mount Vernon, Ms. Melissa Enquist from TAB Middle, and Ms. Jamie Carpenter from TAB High. Each of them are outstanding teachers, and we're very proud of them for this accomplishment. Now, last week, we got to honor the Division Teacher of the Year, Ms. Melissa Enquist. And as Division Teacher of the Year, Melissa is now a candidate for the Regional Teacher of the Year. One of the eight regional honorees will be named the State Teacher of the Year in the fall. And a listing of all 19 school-level teachers of the year, along with our three finalists, are available now on the Division website. And I have nothing else other to report, other than we want to wish everyone a restful and safe spring break. This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll. As a reminder, we will not have a work session during April, so we will see you back here at York Hall on Monday, April 25th, for our regular meeting. Thank you, and have a safe and relaxing spring break. Right.